Please be seated. Councilmember, if any unlikely events are to be activated in the next hour or two, it is important for the several points of the state twice this is your mobile office.
Lord Mayor, please remember that apologies for actions have been received from councillors, Dan Marison, Joe Hansen, Hugh Jolly, Janet Kent, George Maguire, or Charis O'Leary and Paul Walker. Are there any further apologies please?
Can I remind those present officially to the next floor of the council meeting that these are meetings never in public, not public meetings. Now, also I'd like to emphasise these are fully public meetings and I therefore request that everyone present includes the public two key meeting, which is for the business and the government effectively. We use social media and filming to be positive proceedings, this permitted during the council meetings. This does not extend to filming governments over the public and any more wishes of filming procedures are also considered unethical and a very sensitive issue of filming and ensuring the government's best condition on their own. And can I ask for permission from the council to allow the other types of recording procedures which are to be projected on the two bar screen in the chamber? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Lord Mayor, declarations of interest. Can I remind members that you are only required to declare meetings to any disclosive, punitive or prejudicial interests, in which case another will need to leave the chamber during the consideration of that statement. Are there any such declarations please?
I submit, appointments as many older and older women and Anderson for the evening.
Can I move, Lord Mayor, that the following members, former members of the City Council be approved for the honour of all the men and all the women of the City of Liverpool, Frank Anderson, Lisa Carney, Bill Oll and Mark McDavid, all to be appointed as only older men and older women for evidence service provided to the City Council.
Next, I cannot wait then. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Chief Executive.
Moving to the formal City Council meeting, I advise members that apologies for actions have been received. I'll give my list to the members of the Council, Dan Marison, Tim Romans, Joe Hansen, Hugh Jolly, Janet Kent, George Maguire, or Charis O'Leary and Paul Walker. Are there any further apologies please?
If you want to write in, please write in.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I remind members that you are only required to make disclosive, punitive or prejudicial interests, in which case another will need to leave the chamber during the consideration of that statement. Are there any such declarations please?
Lord Mayor. In terms of the constitutional issues, in terms of child care provision, do I have to say the name?
More longer, in terms of understanding of the circumstances of the council, I don't think that would fit the requirements of being a few years old.
Thank you.
I submit two minutes of the last meeting, the minutes of the actual City Council in the 27th of May, 2015, agreed.
Lord Mayor, my vast cast of statements has been received from representatives in the upper house of the school's parliament regarding voting age to be reduced to sixteen for all.
Going by Kira, just the council please.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I'm Kira and today I'm representing the upper house of Liverpool School's Parliament. So Liverpool School's Parliament would like to support councillor Francis's motion on votes at sixteen. At a previous meeting of schools' parliament, we voted overwhelmingly in favour of votes at sixteen. Evidently, votes at sixteen is a big deal for young people. Last year, it was the UK Youth Parliament's national campaign. It remains the British Youth Council's priority campaign and more widely, it is the campaign of the European Youth Forum. Today, we hope that Liverpool City Council will formally support votes sixteen. I'll start by saying that it's no secret that electoral turnout at general elections is worse for young people. Those aged eighteen to twenty-five, just forty-five per cent at the last general election. And of course, you are all aware of this. Young people can feel that their vote is meaningless, that they are not valued, or most simply, that there is just no point. This presents a massive problem for our functioning democracy. It means that time and time again, our issues get ignored, our problems overlooked, and we're left feeling forgotten. It is by empowering young people to vote at the age of sixteen by getting the conversation started in school. And as the EU is a single issue, but is a big deal, this is the perfect opportunity to get young people voting for life. Now, you may think, I'm sure you don't, we're not ready, or we don't know what we're talking about. But seventy-five per cent of sixteen and seventeen-year-olds voted in the Scottish referendum. Plus, I'm sure you can all name a few thirty-year-olds who don't know what they're talking about. You don't wake up on your eighteenth birthday a sudden walking political dictionary. So today, we're talking about the European referendum and councillor Francis's motion. And as we've seen in Scotland, enfranchising sixteen and seventeen-year-olds to have their say on big issues like this is a big deal. It satisfies our democratic right to have a say on our futures. I'll say it again, we need to start these political conversations in a classroom and remove the guard that a lot of young people put up when they hear the word 'politics', because they may see it as boring or only for older people. But the fact of the matter is, this isn't politics, this is to have a say on our futures and what we want our futures and the futures of our children to look like. We need to empower young people because we do care about Erasmus plus, employment rights, and the money that has gone into the development of Liverpool. And equally, the lack of influence we have in the EU, the huge money we spend, and perhaps the suggestion that the whole project has failed. Sixteen and seventeen-year-olds have had a role dealing in politics recently, what with university fees, grants, educational maintenance allowance, and the living wage that is only going to be for those aged twenty-five plus. If we could vote, maybe things would be a lot safer. So at sixteen, you can pay taxes, but you can't decide how those taxes are spent. You can join the army, yet you can't influence the country's foreign policy. You can legally have a baby, but you can't vote. I'd like to finish by encouraging you all to back councillor Francis's motion, but also consider formally backing votes at sixteen in all elections as Liverpool City Council. Thank you for your time.
May I ask a question please?
Well, can I thank Kira for those comments that speak, and also thank councillor Francis for bringing the most. I'm not speaking for myself, actually, I'm speaking for everybody in the council chamber that says we should all agree with the sentiments and all agree with the right to vote at sixteen in all elections. And I think there is an amendment or change, I think everybody would agree. And, you know, I think you made that speech really well, with the points you made about the paying taxes and not being asked how they're spent, about joining the armed forces, all those things which are crucially important to this debate. And in regards to your contribution under schools' parliament, you know, I go to it quite often and see it in full force. And quite frankly, sometimes I always sit with those that are making the decisions in relation to not only the city, I'm talking about nationally, in the hands of the parliament. I think there's a strong, you know, voice, to be heard, that says the lower schools' parliament should take note when I hear some of things. But no, I certainly will support it. The whole council supports it because it's the right thing to do.
And I move that the supervision of the council, that standing role to be suspended, to allow the next two speakers to address the council in relation to items sixteen under the agenda. Is that agreed? May I invite them to the best of council?
Good evening, Lord. My name is Peter Foe. My father disappeared in nineteen forty-six, nearly three years after his marriage to my mother. As a young boy, life was hard and a struggle. I used to feel inferior to other children with a father. And feeling jealousy made way for the fact that not knowing what happened to my father. In nineteen seventy-six, my mother went to her grave thinking she had been deserted. In two thousand and two, the British government released documents, evidence of the forced deportation. When this evidence came to light, I was devastated. My life could have been so different. My children have lost their grandfather, and as a consequence, they and I have also lost our Chinese heritage. This is not going away. We live with the hurt every day. I did not know until late in life that a child could love their father. I always thought it was a one-way affection. And speaking on behalf of all the children, some too ashamed to speak out today, I started the petition for Theresa May to acknowledge our plight because no previous governments have ever discussed or acknowledged in public the actions this country took in nineteen forty-six to forcibly repatriate the Chinese seamen who helped to get supplies to this country and North Russia. The amount of people in this country who know about this atrocity is probably less than point na 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 one per cent of the population. I would be delighted if Liverpool City Council supported the motion to acknowledge the injustice that happened to our fathers. An apology from the whole office would be a good start. For people to recognise that people of this city are sorry that this happened to Liverpool families. Thank you for listening to me.
I was gonna ask May Anderson if he'd like to wait until we have a second speaker. Because both technically are we, so therefore, I would like Stephen Mau to address the council.
I'm delighted to address the council today as chair of the Chinese Labour Corps memorial campaign. Sadly, the vast majority of people are unaware of the vital contribution of ninety-six thousand Chinese volunteers who came to Britain's assistance during the First World War. Despite their contribution on the Western Front, not one of Britain's forty-three thousand First World War memorials even mentions them. The work undertaken by the Chinese Labour Corps was extremely diverse, from digging trenches to repairing tanks. They unloaded ships and trains, built roads, laid railway tracks. They were kept on after the war to do some of the most gruesome work, of which I'll speak a little bit in a moment. British Prime Minister Lloyd George commented in his memoirs of the particular harsh conditions under which the Chinese Labour Corps worked, and of the imperturbability of the Chinese under such harsh conditions. It was the Chinese Labour Corps who were in large part responsible for clearing the battlefields of the Western Front after the armistice, backfilling the trenches, leveling the ground, and perhaps most significantly, exhuming those buried on the battlefields and re-burying them in what we now know as the Commonwealth War Graves that are found across France and Belgium. It's a sad irony that those who were so vital to the construction of those iconic places of remembrance were themselves forgotten. The contribution of these men has routinely been overlooked or relegated to a footnote in history. These men deserve better, and our nation's promise never to forget should apply to them as to any other. So I heartily commend the campaign to you, and if I may ask that you support the formation of a Merseyside defence of the Chinese Labour Corps that can tell this story to this generation. Thank you.
May I ask a question please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I thank Lisa for her contribution, her emotional contribution about the car, and that you all felt really sincerely, deeply shocked by your contribution. Can I also thank Steve for his contribution about the Chinese Labour Corps, Mel Ticken, both separately. The first, in terms of the Chinese seamen, it is absolutely right that we in this city lead that campaign, and I've written personally to Theresa May to ask for an apology of the way families, Chinese families and the Chinese community was treated, not just in this city, but in others. But in particular, this city owes a great debt to Chinese seamen because of the role they played, not just in terms of keeping the commerce and the industries going within this country during the time of war, but actually putting themselves in danger in the Malta convoys and the Art of convoys that took place that they sailed on. The town hall has a list of shipping companies, Lord May, who formerly owned and saved and worked the shipping companies there, and it's right and fitting that we pay tribute to them. But it's also right and fitting that we pay tribute to those that worked on those ships, and as I said, for the reasons that I've just outlined. I think from my point of view, I know councillor Moby has brought the motion to the council, which I hope will receive unanimous support. As somebody that grew up in Chinatown, and somebody that has many, many friends of Chinese descendants, it is for me absolutely vital that we continue that fight to get that apology because the hate that was imposed on you and your families is something that we should never forget. In relation to the Chinese Labour Corps, I also think that again, that tragedy that particular issue of the hundreds of thousands of Chinese workers that supported this country during the war and after the war is never recognised and given the true deserved recognition of what it meant and how it helped this country regain itself once again. And so I will personally commit to getting involved in that campaign, and I'm more than happy to lend my name and this council's name to a campaign that actually recognised the true way of the Chinese community, not only in this city, but further afield and abroad, that came to these shores to actually work and help us survive the aftermath of the war and obviously the consequences of that war, but during the war too. So, council, I'm speaking on behalf of everybody appalled by what went on, but happy to help in any way we can to make sure that that recognition in both cases is truly deserved and recognised.
I submit for Cabinet members' pro-plead. May I ask a question?
That's just for Lord Mayor, just to be noted.
I submit, I submit for any of these executive committees, none of these are written. With regards to item six, I'll be to the table please.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I note that we've had agreements on my main motion, so that's noted. And I also think that there's been some agreement on the motion being up forward by councillor Kent and councillor Radford in relation to devolution. And I know there are some amendments that I'm having to discuss, but I think it's probably important that I address and give an update to the council on where we are with regards to devolution for the city region, and just to give my views of how that's been a progress and where we're up to. I think many people in this chamber know that I actually supported the view that we need a Metro May for probably over fourteen years. I believe so because in my view, developing that agglomeration for a purpose with a vision and a passion that brings together a powerful force, a force for good in terms of economic growth and also for social change, is absolutely vital and necessary. I said that before austerity, but it's even more important now. Again, I've repeatedly said in this council that in my view, the old style of competition between local authorities within this city region and indeed within others actually hinders progress for the whole region. In contribution I'm gonna make in this update, I'm gonna quote two former US presidents. The first in this chamber, who have used many, many times, is from the great JFK, who said conformity is the jail of freedom and the enemy of growth. And in the debates about modern forms of governance, I think it's an apt word for me to mention because it is about changing a system that needs changing, changing a system that is fairly riddled and is long overdue for overhaul. But now, it is finally happening. It is, as many people have said, that train is on the track and it isn't gonna stop. Another metaphor I've used recently is around the horse pulling away from the bus stop. We either are on it or stay at the bus stop, letting other people move ahead and then fall behind. So I wanna use the opportunity to have a conversation with you, but equally, just to tell you about the potential devolution agreements for the city region, and what it actually could mean for us as a city, for Liverpool and for its people. But in doing so, I actually wanna try to engage in a debate around that, rather than questions around what is gonna be called, who'll be the leader, and all the tit for tat about he wants it, she doesn't, he does, and all the squabble that's gonna take place. We need to be actually clear about what it is that is on offer and the potential that is on offer for us, and we must press on with that deal and secure that deal in the best interest of us all. And I don't need to tell you in this chamber again how proud I am to be mayor of Liverpool, but it was always my view that the mayor of the city of Liverpool should never actually be a head of the mayor of a city region. But because we couldn't get a combined authority, because we couldn't get cooperation, I wasn't gonna leave Liverpool behind when there was a better deal to be had. The city of Liverpool, life in your blood, it is in my blood too. It's who I am and who you are, and it's what makes us tick, it's what has made me the person that I am today. And I can't think of a better job in the world than being able to make a positive difference to the place that you love every single day. And of course, you do what I do, doing things for the city, because it's not for us, it's for the future of our kids and our grandkids too. And it's my grandkids and my kids that inspire me every single day to do the things that I do. And it's for them that we need to actually make the changes that are necessary. But it's also heartbreaking when we talk of our kids and our future, to see, like everybody else can see, the damage that has been done to us by this government. The scale of the problem has to be recognised by everybody and put out there and remembered every single day of the work and the problems we face. Fifty-eight per cent, a massive cut of three hundred and thirty million pounds, that faces us. The welfare cuts, not only that are coming down the tubes, but what we already have in terms of welfare cuts, and not only impacting on our city as we have less money to deliver them, but they're actually taking away money from the local economy every single day. And it absolutely hurts me to see people being let down, losing valuable frontline services purely because of the unfair political cuts that is happening. Every day, I will, you will, we will protect as much as we can, doing deals on our libraries, doing deals around our children's centres, rather than have them close to close. I also just want to, as we go into the details about city region, just to actually, I will personally pay tribute to the cabinet members and also to the mayoral unions, but more importantly, to the officers and the workforce of this council that are still delivering every single day in the tough times. And that is because I know we face even more difficult decisions as we come up to two thousand and seventeen, even harder choices and more difficult decisions are being forced on us. So that's why, if you like, the devolution deal has come at a crucial time. We've been offered this deal, and that's what it is, an offer, with potential to actually change the way we do things and how we do it. While governments have been slashing our budgets and we accept that, we also know that there's been a shift, a positive shift, to recognise the opportunity that Whitehall isn't the place that grows the economy of this country. As far as I'm concerned, for us to be able to take control of our budgets and powers from Whitehall and from the mandarins that control them, powers over planning so that we can take a long-term view of development, powers over transport and infrastructure so we can attract investments and make a difference both socially and environmentally, power over skills so we can develop our people's potential for the industries of the future and for growth of our city, powers on finance so that we can hold on to more that we generate as a city, recognition also that powers at the local level are always the best thing to do because it means the communities and the people at the local level can make that real difference, a difference that actually means something to the people that we represent. There is now, of course, a growing consensus that recognise that the country can't simply just try to fulfil its potential while the economy of it remains so unbalanced. If we're gonna see real economic recovery, then spreading wealth and spreading opportunity across all parts of the country mean that we can actually make a contribution to the UK economy. It's what Professor Michael Parkinson has talked about and and many other economic academics have also pointed out. We have to look seriously, seriously at the Westminster bubble and taking those powers from them. Those powers that will allow us, as I say, to shape and change how we do things. London can create the wealth and growth for the whole country. I spoke at an event in the British Library last week, which was about the nation, the rest of the country and the nation. And they described the nation as being the capital, mostly dependent on the capital. But to a certain extent, that's true. But we've been a country of successful regions, we always have. Manchester was the first industrial city, the great city of the north. Liverpool, the second city of the British Empire, the gateway to the world economically. It was the best of the country at one particular time. And it's what made Great Britain great, it really did. And it angers me that those days were actually cruelly snatched away from us, sparring the region and our cities' significant decline. While the balance of power between the centres of cities like Liverpool has been growing, that wider gulf has been leaving us. And that's simply because governments nationally and governments locally wanted to stick with an archaic form of governance that simply is not fit for purpose. The relationship between London and our other four cities is broken. Everybody should recognise that, it's broken. We're told by them what we can do and how we should do it. And we're given penalties from governments instead of retaining some of our own taxes that we raise. There's officials in Whitehall, and I've met them and talked to them, who actually don't even know where Liverpool is on a map. And yet they're taking important decisions, decisions that affect the people we represent every single day. They take our business rates and our receipts and actually give us a fraction of it back. They cut the budget, as I said, by fifty-eight percent and tell us to get on with it. They won't listen when we say how unfair and how unbalanced it is. They won't listen when we talk to people about us being reliant on food banks. They don't listen to the disabled and those under attack constantly. They don't listen when we talk about the care package has been taken away from people that desperately need them. They won't listen when we tell them that we're a city most in need and the city most in need of funding to actually pay and support those services. They won't listen when we tell them we're the city that's suffering the most deepest in relation to cuts. And the goal of things, the real goal of things, and again, we've said it many, many times, not just me, but other leaders and fairness in this chamber have also said that the cuts are self-defeating. They don't and won't help us rebalance our economy, either here in Liverpool or across the national economy. They just simply, simply entrench inequality. And that's what caused Britain's economy to fail and become imbalanced in the first place. And they won't stop people relying and needing our help. They'll just simply, simply push people further into dependency and into despair. The plea, and I mentioned this at this seminar that I was talking to last week, that fairness plea falls on deaf ears, they fail to listen. And I quoted to them, and it was amazing, these were London academics, full of people that, again, that very, very seldom travelled further than the outside of the outstated London. When I spoke to them and explained the situation of Liverpool, they, in fairness, were genuinely surprised at how difficult we have it. But as I said to them face to face, I can't blame you for that because if you lived in one part of the country that's created eighty percent of the jobs in the private sector, while the rest of the country is struggling to grow, your view will be clearly out of step with the rest of the countries. And that old phrase and saying, if there's bliss. But I quoted some of the things, and it was amazing to watch the faces and the reaction. I'll repeat them to you. Commются of property prices in London, square foot, a hundred and ten pounds. The North, twenty-eight pounds. DCMS, in this is arts and culture spend, sixty-eight pound ninety-nine in London. Four pound fifty-eight in Liverpool. Government infrastructure spend, government infrastructure spend, five thousand four hundred and twenty-six pounds per person in London. The North, five hundred and ninety-nine pounds. Government transport infrastructure, two thousand five hundred and ninety-five pounds. In the North West, ninety-nine pounds. And then we look at the other benefits that they receive in terms of spend, whether it's on housing benefits, tax credits, child benefits. The average London household receives more benefits, benefits in time. That's public services than we do within the North. They have education subsidies, subsidies for bus and rail travel. Six hundred and ten pounds more is spent for household in education than is in Liverpool. A hundred and ten pounds is spent on household on bus subsidy, travel compared to in Liverpool. Forty-four pounds more on housing, a subsidy that they get than Liverpool. Sixty pounds on school meals and healthy start practices, more than Liverpool. Eighty pounds a person on the NHS than Liverpool is being spent. So my challenge for us and for all political parties facing this government is to tell them we can't rebalance the economy without rebalancing the spending. So while the UK and London need each other, there's no question. We cannot prosper in isolation from each other, we need to work together. The seven and a half million people across the northern powerhouse is equivalent to the size of the capital, and that shows the importance that it can play to the UK's economy. It is that imbalance of spend detrimental not only to our city and to the City Region, but as I said, detrimental to the nation as a whole. And of course, we faced the blows, we've been knocked to our knees before under Thatcher. We suffered catastrophic decline. It brought us to the brink of, you know, almost to being extinct in a sense, as they at that time used the phrase 'mannered decline', and we faced a huge task to get out of that. And I thank you to councils since then who've actually brought us to where we are today. But of course, everybody also knows that our economy is still really fragile and there's a lot to do. So we have to do things differently and talk about how we get ourselves out of this. And that's why I recognise, and I hope everybody now recognises, that we have to work with governments because whether we like it or whether we don't, five, potentially ten years is the lifespan of a government that whether we want it or whether we don't is gonna make change happen. So Liverpool deserves better, I know that, you know that. But we've got a set of cards that we're playing with and we can't influence how that hand is dealt. So we do deserve better, Wimbledon deserves better, St Helens and Holby deserve better, nobody deserves better. The people on the streets, our kids, our families, our communities deserve better. And the only way we're gonna get that is by entering into dialogue. So what can we do? Well, we're faced now with a one opportunity, an opportunity actually, if you like, in some senses, to try to emancipate ourselves from that Whitehall-mandarin grip that's existed for many years. It's not the panacea for the cuts. It's not going to actually mean that we can solve all our problems overnight, far from it. But we owe it to the people of the City Region to take the chance that we've been given with both hands. It is, if you like, like a child kicking off the stabilisers and being able to move ahead and race ahead. Our City Region, doing what is best for our people without being held back, is what we want. It's a process that's not hugely dynamic, but it is in a sense a process that allows us to shape our own destiny. I agree, personally, yourself, that the City Region working together can actually make this City Region and our city great once again. But we have to really act now. Time is on our side, you'll see. The Fats, that Leeds, Sheffield, Newcastle now, announced in the last couple of days, Birmingham are all actually ahead of us in those negotiations. So the time for talk about how we delay or slow that process down ain't gonna help us. So those cities storming ahead, Manchester with their devolution deal, have added even more things and are clearly becoming the pace setters, which I want our City Region to be. But we can't allow that competitive disadvantage to leave us behind. So, you know, let me be clear. I don't wanna stop Leeds or Manchester having a mayor deal and negotiating a deal with London. We're up to it. But I want us to have a deal and a better deal than what Manchester has and Leeds has and Birmingham has and the others that will come along and do that. It's up to us to simply negotiate those deals, negotiate the best deal, and simply not squander the opportunity because of pettiness or because of ego. We can't let that single authority self-pride fly in the face of the genuine opportunity to write our own stories. I mentioned before, I was gonna quote two presidents of the United States. And the second one, Lincoln, he once said, "The best way to predict your future is to actually create it." And that's what we have to do, the choice we have to try to create our own future. And so we're in a pivotal position here. We can create that future, we can create our own destiny, and we have to be brave and seize that opportunity. Liverpool, as you know and see and talk to people, is in a position where we are moving ahead, there is no question of that. Economically, we're doing really well and we're punctured above all ways. We have a national personality, an iconic brand, twelve new schools being built, three fantastic universities preparing to once again host the International Festival of Business. The superpoor with that, you know, new jobs, five thousand new jobs being created within the superpoor directly, with around thirty thousand jobs being created across the City Region, can actually help us move a great deal even more forward. At the City Region, we met with Brett Clark just recently. We've negotiated, if you like, with him, a position where we are now engaging in negotiations and debates. And as I said, that prize is graced. What I wanna say to you is that I will, with the City Region Combined Authority elected leader Phil Davis, lead the negotiation team on behalf of the local authorities with the chief executive of Liverpool City Council, David Carr from Holton, who will be in the negotiating team for the City Region deal. So I'm delighted that we are actually coming together now finally and working together. And I just believe that when I talk about the potential and our asks, yes, there will be certain asks that governments want us to have because it's part of the deal that they're asking other people to have. It won't be a smorgasbord.